Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to say welcome to all of the officials from the city and other guests. I appreciate you showing up here tonight. And just a point of information, we are the appointed commissioners who make up the Allen Park Planning and Zoning Commission. And the names you see along the front of us here, that belongs to some other folks, City Council and others to name.
They're better looking than us.
So with that in mind, let me call our meeting to order and call upon our secretary, Mr. Commissioner Davich to with the roll call, please.
Graham?
Here.
Messenger?
Here.
Hagan? Hagan? Excuse us. Perota?
Here.
Grant?
Here.
And Davich is there?
Do you have a form?
You have a form.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. And let's go through the approval of the amendments for February the 6th, 2014.
Motion.
Have a motion on the floor to accept this printed.
Second.
Have a support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Seeing none. They'll stand approved, this printed. Let's go into new business, the rezoning of property in the new C-6C district. Now, this evening, we're going to be reviewing and actifying the proposed zoning text and map amendment to revise Article III district regulations and the Article IV supplemental regulations to create the new C-6C, the Southfield Road Mixed Use Development District. And then we're going to establish regulations for the district pertaining to permitted uses, regulated uses, restrictions, area height, both placement and the like, protective screening and such. Now, this proposed amendment to the official zoning map will rezone the following properties currently in the RD Research and Development District to the proposed C-6C, Southfield Road Mixed Use Development District. Now, these seven eight properties which shape a triangle to Matty who's sitting in it right now are bonded by two separate railroad tracks and rails in the north here of Southfield Road. They are commonly known as postal addresses, 8,000 and 8310 Enterprise Drive, also 16,630, 16,650, 16,850, 17,000, 17,100, 17,200 Southfield Roads, and a few others. It's pretty much the Ford property, the Roche property. We've got a gas station, the Sphinx Gas Station, a couple of other items just here to our west heading up north on the freeway, Ford Motor Company, if you will, and others. Now, I want you to please note that should the C6-C district be adopted, all of these properties that are in place will remain in compliance. The C-6C district is not directly adjacent to really any residentially zoned properties. And currently, the Allen Park zoning map has two C6 districts. You may know both of them. One is the C6A, the Farlane Green District, which is up on the hill, if you will, and also the C6B, the Marketplace District, the International Marketplace, the old property that had the Veterans Hospital located on that triangle. Now, then additionally during this meeting, there will be a public hearing called for the purpose of receiving public comments. Then, the commissioners will vote on the proposal, and a recommendation will be sent to the Allen Park Emergency Manager, Ms. Joyce Parker. Now, this time, let me call upon our building department to present the proposal for rezoning. Mr. Boomer?
Good evening. In doing some of the historical research on the history of all the properties, I did include a couple documents. You can see even back as far as 1989 is a document from the previous building owner talking about the redevelopment of this, the largest portion of this particular parcel, and a couple of adjacent parcels into some type of mixtures. The district in its entirety started out as a medium industrial district with the largest being the Montgomery Works Distribution Center. The Ford had a couple buildings. In 2005, it was rezoned to the R&amp;D District. The current proposal is somewhat of a melding of the old, the existing, and some new uses that came about in some conversations. The city did employ Way Trim to help us in the evolution and creating of a new district. They did look at our existing districts, as you see up on the hill, our general commercial districts, as well as the existing R&amp;D District. They did come up with recommendation in conversations and concluded with both the emergency manager and myself, some previous developers that had interest in the property. We came up with a guideline or a plan, as you see, for the new, for the new district. The new proposed district is really in line with, like I said, there's been some previous developers that talked about trying to develop property on Southfield Road. As our current ordinance is written, you could not put a fast food restaurant on Southfield Road without some form of variance because it does not meet the requirements of the district. Like I said, in doing the historical research, this is really a melding of the old, the existing, and the proposed uses that seem to be harmonious with anyone that's really looked at the property as a whole. Like I said, I did include a document from 1989 outlining a very similar proposal for the whole parcel of property. So this is, this is not something that, this is something that's been bannered about for roughly 25 years on this site. And that was really the reason for putting that historical document in there as well. Tonight, we also do have Nick from Way Trim that could possibly expand on some of the exact requirements in the district. But you can see that we have broken it down similar to our other districts where there are permitted uses, regulated uses. Some of the, we even broke it down a little bit more than some of the other districts where we actually have some building materials that you can use, which we do not have in other districts, which I think is a nice change. Some of the partner requirements are a little bit, or the signage requirements are a little bit different, although I think they're easier to read. So like I said, we did have more than several meetings trying to come up with a comprehensive plan that seemed to work for everyone involved. We did try to keep any of the rooftops because the properties are reported on the other side of the railroad tracks by some residential areas across Southfield still is residential, although the properties immediately adjacent are zoned commercial. As you can see in the proposal for some of the more industrial type uses, we actually put a 500-foot clearance off of Southfield Road so they would not be abutting on Southfield Road to try to, to keep the property not having some type of industrial use right up on Southfield. So I don't know if Nick wants to expand on any of the thought processes on top of that, but that's really historical where we got this document to where it is today.
Nick, if you care to say anything, you may step forward, would you please? I want to make sure the mic is on. Would you give it a quick sound check? Thank you. And do me a favor, Nick, would you state your full name and who you represent for our secretary?
My name is Nick Lomako, L-O-M-A-K-O.
Can you head the floor, sir?
Thank you.
Way Trim?
Way Trim, right. I'm a senior vice president there and a practicing planner, consulting planner, the 36 years of experience. And first of all, let me just kind of echo a comment that I heard earlier from Dave, that this truly was a collaborative effort, an effort that was, has taken some time. Way Trim really appreciated the opportunity to come and work as part of the team to prepare this draft before we receive it. So we want to thank you publicly for that opportunity. Thank you. The important point, I think, is that, as he's indicated in your introduction, Mr. Chairman, this is, should look familiar in terms of organization. As you know, that we've had that Farlane Green and the Marketplace District, and so we use that as a template, if you will, to structure this proposed mixed-use development district. The second point I'd like to make is that we have a zoning map change as well as a zoning ordinance text change that supports the map change. So for the benefit of the record, we should make sure that those items are both included. Now, we introduce this as a mixed-use district because it has certain characteristics that we are trying to achieve on this triangular piece of property. You'll note that if you looked at the permitted uses and regulated uses, that the uses are business-oriented, that they're not geared for single-family detached, for example. We're looking for business enterprises. The types of enterprises that are being proposed are urban in nature, which we believe are consistent with the configuration of the property and the ability to attach itself to Southfield Road, as well as its regional position in the region. We also believe that the majority of the uses are complementary and commonly associated with one another. For example, you'll see overnight lodging and a movie theater. Those often are associated with each other. You'll also see some vocational schools and some convenience stores that often are found in combination. So that's why we call this a mixed-use district, because they tend to support and are commonly associated with one another. When you look at the permitted uses, one of the things should jump out at you right away is that we do not want to make the previous developments that are occupying your property not conforming. And so we grandfather them in by looking at the very first one, any use that's currently allowed in the R&amp;D District would be allowed to continue in this district that we create. So no one would be harmed that way. And the historical analysis that you heard is that some properties were originally proved as industrial. You'll note under regulated uses that we're allowing those uses to continue again and to be able to expand without going through the idea of overcoming a non-conforming situation. So hold harness with one of the goals here as well. The variety of uses, I think, are self-explanatory. A lot of them come from the 6A district. If you want to talk about the permitted uses, those are the uses that are allowed by right. Once we determine that they are complying with the definition of those uses, the next step for any of those interested parties to develop any of those uses would be the C-side plan approval. The other type or class of use that we have in here is consistent with your template that you have in your zoning code. It's called regulated uses. Those are types of uses that have a higher degree of scrutiny. The first question we ask as a community is whether or not those uses are appropriate, where the developer intends them to locate within the district. And once that test is met, using the standards that are contained in your zoning ordinance, you are then allowed to proceed to the site plan and development aspects of that. You'll note that most of the regulated uses has to deal with light industrial and automobile-related type of manufacturing facilities, which are consistent with some of the major land uses that you have right now as well. I think that's the easy part of the ordinance. I think the more interesting part of the ordinance is, is the idea of the use restrictions or some of the standards that would be applicable to development on this important and strategic piece of property in your community. And that's where a lot of the discussion that we had with staff and the administration about what we should consider, what would be the minimum threshold of requirements that an applicant would have to be met. And so we, we touched on the majority of the standard types of elements of site design that a developer would encounter to make it easier for the developer to understand what the expectations would be in terms of the ordinance, and to make sure that we have a standard that was reasonable and that would protect the other property interests of your community. So in terms of landscaping, and just to kind of summarize each, if you have any particular questions that I'm done on any standard, I'd be glad to go back. But a landscaping is very simple. We didn't want all the site to be paved over or hardscaped by a building or occupied by a building. We wanted an introduction of green on any of the development sites to make sure that it is contributing to good environmental objectives, as well as being more aesthetically pleasant in terms of the development sites. In terms of building materials, we want to make sure that they were aesthetically appropriate and durable, and that there was a certain type of materials that would be approved, those that would have a shelf life, if you will, of 10 years or more in particular. We're also concerned about using radical themed structures of signage, high intensity colors, fluorescent colors, or building or roof forms intended to draw unnecessary attention to passersby. So we didn't want to see something extraordinary in terms of design or color or reflection. We wanted a development that was well conceived and that would fit into the fabric of the community that you presently have. One of the larger nuisance impacts that can occur in site development is exterior lighting. We wanted to make sure that any outdoor lighting would be shielded and shaded and directed out to the property, and that they'd be designed a particular way. Any freestanding light structure would be a full cutoff design to prevent glare from being cast to passersby. And a cutoff structure just means that the light source itself is buried within the light fixture, so you don't see it. We spent a considerable amount of time talking about signage, looking at your existing regulations, and then kind of customizing your regulations from what our practice has proven to be very workable and well received by the marketplace. So we deal with wall signs, and we deal with freestanding signs, and we even talk about big box buildings, if you will, that might be considered for the property, and special treatment for those to make sure that adequate signage is provided to serve the retailer, but not to overwhelm the site. And so we want to kind of structure the proportionality of those signs. Parking and circulation, the, some of these uses that are introduced, like movie theaters and retail establishments and lodging facilities, we have to be very concerned about how parking is provided and oriented on the property. So we provide direction on that in terms of spacing and location and how those parking lots would be divided to make them more user-friendly for the patrons of those facilities. And certainly, you have protective screening and, and use of dumpsters and how those would be enclosed are consistent with the regulations that you have in place today, and we just have a friendly reminder at the bottom of those regulations as well. We then move on to say, okay, well, these are the uses we're going to have. These are the kind of site design requirements that we think are reasonable. The next question he has, what are the setback and height requirements that this district ought to have? That too is somewhat challenging, given the character of your community and what your current districts have, your A and B districts, which are rather tight. For example, your districts right now have a 20-foot front yard setback, which makes it, would be very close to the road with a 20-foot front yard setback. We, we believe that that should be expanded or increased a little bit to allow green belt in the front, perhaps a row of parking, a traveling from the building, particularly useful for fast food establishments. So for that reason, we suggested that your front yard setback be expanded to 50 feet and keep your rear yard at, at 50 feet to mirror the front yard requirement. On the one side and two side requirements that you see in your code, our identical to the 6A and 6B requirements for a 20-foot setback on each of those sides, if you will. The maximum height of structures is also important, inasmuch as we're introducing things like lodging facilities. We have that at four. We believe that is reasonable, given the types of lodging facilities that are currently being built in the marketplace, and accordingly, with that four-story height, having a maximum height structures of 50 feet. The last thing you see in your packet is what I call housekeeping. There are other places in your zoning ordinance where we talk about protective screening, and we list a series of use districts where protective screening requirements have to be imposed. Obviously, the 6C district is a new one, and so now that 6C reference is embedded in those appropriate sections of one, two, three that you see in the final sections of your graph. So that's kind of it. If you're unfamiliar, some of those standards you should feel comfortable with. If you have any particular questions, I'd be glad to answer them when it's appropriate.
Now, if I may, can I have you just stand by just a little bit longer?
Sure.
In place, and I will open the floor to the commissioners for any questions at Way Trim.
Oh, I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Do you have various enterprises there? Are, and your parking, are you going to have connecting access to all the parking?
Yes.
It's not going to be?
Isolated.
Isolated.
No, no parking lot should be an island unto itself when you have a large mixed-use development. You should have the ability to.
You see in here that if you have that, you're supposed to have some kind of shrubbery or something in there.
Yeah, we strongly recommend that any parking lot of significant size include landscaping as an element of that. You know, these landscaped islands that you might have and a end of a row of parking, for example, we believe that would improve the character of the site.
Would you have a sign on Southfield on that portion of the property we have?
The signage requirements are really use-dependent and to where the uses go, so it's hard for me to speculate on, on how a sign might.
I mean, you're not going to have a big marquee out there with a bunch of businesses.
No, there's no provision in the draft in front of you today that would permit that.
Okay, that's all I hear.
And I think, Commissioner. Any other questions? Mr. Messenger?
Please.
You just studied the property and you come up with the best use of the property criteria.
Well, we did it collaboratively. Oh, yes.
Who were you working for?
I'm sorry?
Who do you work for?
City, yeah, I'm hired by the city.
Okay. Not the owners of the property?
No, we were hired by the city.
I understand. So if the owners come in with their separate plan, they would work with you so as far as roads and, and interconnecting and what is one exit in, one exit out? We, they would all have to come to here, wouldn't have anything to do with, with this particular plan, as you can see.
Correct.
Yeah, I think for any clarification sake, this is not a site plan review process. We do not have a site plan for the site. This is strictly created in a zoning district.
Right. So the city hired you to come up with a proposal that would entice people to come in and then go out and look for subs or sub-buildings to come in and lease the property and utilize the property?
Isn't that correct?
Okay.
But Way Trim would not necessarily be the person to take and ask or be looking for individuals to come in here.
We've never been asked to recruit businesses here?
No, that's okay. I mean, you're working for the city and that, you know, we're looking for development.
That's correct, Commissioner.
You're wrapping it up. You're wrapping the package up in a prettier, pretty package to.
Right, we put it in a planning format because that's what we do best.
Understood.
Commissioner? Yes, page two that, okay, when we were talking about, you know, churches and schools, okay, business and colleges, and at item two on page two, the private, and then you went on to page, what is it? Page four, you said churches and the other facilities, no one isn't providing that. Is it for nonprofits? So if the church wanted to come in and, you say for profit on page two, section two, and so if the school district, well, it'd be the Allen Park, they wanted to build a school there, you know, because they had more students or whatever, or, you know, a private school, a charter school wanted to come in, or a, what is it? Say, like a new American Legion or KSC Hall or something of the sort, would they fall in, in the area of coming into this, the Graffley Re. district there?
That's, that's a great question. The intent is to encourage business-oriented taxable properties to develop on this site. So for that reason, we indicated in that phrase you're mentioning, the profit motive. But that's in the uses of permitted uses by right.
But you, but then you say page four says churches, so that's why it's not allowed.
Right.
But churches are not necessary for profit.
They're certainly not, and that's why we classify this differently than permitted. This is under the banner of regulated uses, and it would be up to the city to determine a church, if they were to want to locate on the property, to determine whether or not their proposal was appropriate where they intend to build. That's why it's classified differently than a permitted use.
Do you understand my question?
I certainly do. That's a fair question.
Any other questions, commissioners? Can I ask, Commissioner?
The portion that I have is, you put the denim of 500 feet for the warehouse unit?
Yes.
What was the warehouse you set back before?
Well, I, I don't remember right off the top of my head.
About 1,500 feet, is that some, correct?
Uh, geez, I.
Was it more than 500 feet before, correct?
I can't say for sure. I, I.
Let's just say that it was, it's now 500 feet, and now it's, well, now it's 500 feet proposed.
Yes.
Before it was 700, 800, 1,000, something like that.
I'll, I'll take your word.
Okay. Now we're potentially allowing where, a whole line of warehousing to potentially line up Southfield Road. Is that correct?
Well, we believe that the 500-foot separation district would prevent that from happening as Dave indicated in his induction remarks. Do you want to talk more about that?
Yeah, I don't believe that we had any previous setback into the district for any warehouse in kind. So the 500 feet actually is the first setback that we've ever had for a warehouse. There are some places adjacent to this here where Ford Motor Property or some of the other properties are much closer than 500 feet to Southfield Road.
Okay. And if I may, Mr.? Sure, Commissioner. On, on page four, for example, under regulated uses, where we mentioned that 500 feet, we always mention that 500 feet from Southfield Road.
I understand that the regulated uses has to come back to the planning commission.
Yes, yes.
And before, I mean, where we, it is now stated, it is a permitted use. As far as the permitted uses allowed in the M1 by industrial district, that has to receive approval from the planning commission, correct?
Yeah, and permitted uses would, once the staff determines that they're permitted, they submit a site plan, it would come to you through a site plan approval process.
Right. And warehousing in itself would not have to because it's permitted use, but not located 500 feet.
Warehousing, as long as they are 500 feet or further back from Southfield Road, they, they'd be considered permitted, but they still require a site plan to come in front of it. Right.
Okay. I have another question.
Commissioner?
Where would you put a service station, a gas station? Near Southfield or further back, or where it says they're permitted?
Well, we have one on the site already, Commissioner.
Pardon?
There is a.
Well, there was one down Southfield for years. So it's reopened now?
It's reopened?
Yes, and that, that would be.
Is that part of this?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, that would be in compliance, or it's not in compliance right now.
No, okay.
Yes. Through the chair.
Please.
Mr. Boomer? Just have a question on the railroad track and also the utility poles. Remember, we had to take, when we had over by Hoager and Dashar and that, we had the problem, they had to have a certain amount of clearance because of the electrical poles that are going there. Is that within this district or is it within restrictions there? And is the variance on each side of the railroad tracks?
And I believe you're talking about the new ITC requirements and their expanded easement rights.
Correct.
It is, the easement portion will not be granted to ITC's property. They just have the rights to come onto the property, although I do not believe that the city has granted all of those in this particular district. We have elsewhere in the city. I do not believe that those easement or vegetation easement rights have been granted on this property. I, I could be wrong, but I don't think we did it on this property where we have elsewhere in the city.
But you follow where I'm coming from, because you said before, a number of planning zones are boarded appeals after your wedge, that, that it had to be, the vegetation, excuse me, the vegetation and that has to take, be cut down by a certain amount of feet there, and the residents were upset because they wanted that buffer between the, you know, between the buildings and that. So I was just wanting to make sure that that is, you know, in the zone, if that requirement should be in there or not in there. That's my question really.
But why is some of that restricted by the railroad right away?
Cutting down. The, the, the new ITC, this is a transmission company, easement, wanted to go from, I believe their existing easement is 30 or 40 feet there to 85 feet for their trimming purposes. They did come to the city for us to sign off on easement rights, but to my knowledge, we have not done that to this point. We have elsewhere in the city, we have not done it on this particular. We have elsewhere in the city, we have not done it on this particular parcel.
But if we rezone this, and I, you know, if you rezone this, and that where the Ford Motor Company is, back over by Dashar and Myers and that, that area there, remember there was a certain area that you had to cut down where the property, they cut down the vegetation that was there, and the residents were very upset at that time? And Myers, is that whole length of that, those utility poles, are they going to have that easement, or do we have to, they have to come before us, or what?
They do not have that easement as of today.
Okay, should we make this in the provision that they should have that easement or not?
If, if I may, you, you don't need to do that for an easement. An easement is only granted right by the property owner. So, the property owner in the instance is who?
Right now, it's...
It's the city, right?
Yes.
So, anybody who wants to install a utility easement on that property has to come to the city and ask for permission to occupy that land for their particular purpose, whether it's for road purposes, whether it's for utility purposes, whether it's for any other easement right.
Right, but you're missing my point. The point is, it's already there, and they made the new EPA guidelines, or new guidelines, that they have to have a certain amount of area, I think it was 40, was it 40 feet, or I forgot what it, what it was actually, that you had to have each side of those poles. In the center here is the pole and hanging, like, like so. And each side, the vegetation had to be cleared because they didn't want it to grow up, the vegetation to grow up into the, to wires, and they said that that was a nationwide thing that you had to take and have.
If, if there's an existing easement in place that's not sufficiently sized and more area is needed, as you mentioned, they would still have to come in front of the city and ask for that additional easement area.
When do they ever, okay, then back to Myers, I'm sorry, you know, when do they come back to us and ask for that easement? And when do they ever come back to us to ask, you know, along, what is it, Beatrice, Myers, Dashar, Horga, Hanover, Anne, and Warwick? When did they come back and ask us for something to clear out the vegetation?
To be clear, they haven't come back to us. They've come to the city, I'm going to say, four or five times for different areas in town, different parts, different parcels around the cities, guys. Some of the easements we have, vegetation we have signed off on, we have not done anything, to my knowledge, on the hundred meter for a parcel.
Excuse me. If I may, David, so what you're saying is they come back to you and they ask the city for permission. It's not a mandatory governmental EPA thing that the city has to follow through on?
That's correct.
Okay, because I was, we were led, definitely, when you...
Yes.
Okay, okay, and I, I just wanted this to be in compliance, that's all I was looking for.
And I thank the Commissioner for that. Any other questions? If not, let me just take a moment and I, listen, I want to thank you ever so much for coming tonight.
Pleasure.
And I appreciate you going through the code of ordinances, and I also appreciate all of the information that you provided tonight. And if I may, you know, when we were talking a little bit about nuisances earlier, and I'm pretty much determined, looking at the permitted uses, pardon, that we ought not to have any difficulty with any type of smoke or aromas, odors drifting into the neighborhood or the rest of the district. Am I pretty much assured in that?
Yes.
And also, you know, you talked a little bit about excessive lighting and glare and things like that, and I really appreciate that. And then, what would be, if any, an impact on I-94 or maybe the Southfield Road? Does any impact with lighting or glare or anything in that way, even from signage, whether it be monumental or pylon, even digital signs or things like that?
I, I really don't, and I, and I say that from two perspectives. I think the ordinance is a pretty good regulation, but on, but on top of that, when the developer comes to you with development plans, whether we help review it or statutes does, but certainly when it appears before you, I trust the wisdom of the commission to resolve those issues before they become real.
And then when we look northern, northern part of the parcel, with regard to the railroad and the right of way, we don't see any determination that we're going to have any difficulty with the railroad up in that direction. I don't think the railroad has any part of this, but nevertheless, we also want to be good neighbors at all times.
I don't, I don't see any conflict there.
Okay. And I think about our good neighbors in other cities and towns that, oh, just have a few bumps in the road and some difficulties, and do you see a way that any private clubs might come into the district with some of the regulations that we have here? Private clubs, meaning that they may mirror some of those that we have in sister cities that have been troublesome and nuisances and frequent calls to police departments and things like that?
Yeah, I, it's, it's hard to say. My, my best guess is probably not.
I think you're absolutely right. I think your best guess is going to ring true. Yes, and thank you for that. Boy, I got to thank you for talking about landscaping. How important is that? And to have 20% of the parcel landscaped, and not only landscaped, but with mature evergreens and things like that, it's really going to start off in a strong way of landscaping, and I, I thank you for putting that into this.
I'm glad, appreciate it, Mr. Commissioner.
At this time, I'd like to open it up to the Commissioners anymore? Question? One more question. How many entrances and exits are we going to have on Southfield?
It's, it's too early to tell. We need to see what sort of development proposals are presented to us. It's good planning practice to try to minimize the number of curbscuffs along Southfield Road. So, it would be good planning practice, if you will, that when developers approach you and they have development plans, that you try to minimize the number of driveways coming into and out of Southfield Road. You want to keep Southfield Road traffic moving well and safely at a high level of service. The more curbscuffs you have, the more you contravene that goal. So, we need to keep them to a memo.
A few years back, when we had other plans in the city, we were trying to get the state to do some work on Southfield to make it more accessible to that area.
Uh-huh.
And that fell through. So, I'm just...
I'm sorry, that didn't work out for you.
Through the chair.
And I have another...
With this, if we, like MGM wanted to, Casino wanted to, or the Club Hollywood that's in Ohio wanted to come over here, would that, would this property be available for them under this redistricting?
Well, well, the property is available, but, but I can tell you from personal knowledge that the ability to claim property for casinos is a very challenging thing to do.
No, but I'm just saying, would they be able to be, the redistricting of this, redistricting, would they be able to come into the...
I would, I would say you probably could, not because we have overlying lodging, but they might want to ask for variance on height, but who knows?
And I thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Don't bring, don't bring any...
We'll bring you back.
Okay.
We'll bring you back. This is a public hearing tonight, and at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing portion of this meeting. Anybody wishing to speak, I would ask you maybe one at a time step forward to the table in your place. This is a open public hearing, part of this meeting. Please step forward, and good evening, or councilman. And would you do me a favor? Please direct all of your questions to the chair.
Absolutely.
And then, if you will, mind stating your name once again, if maybe, you know, you represent yourself for the city for the purpose of the secretary?
Good evening, Chairman Graham and Commissioners, appreciate you coming out tonight. My name is Bob Keenan. Just wanted to clarify for you a little bit on the ITC issue. ITC did come before the city council, at least on two occasions, asking for the variance for that property. I believe, and I won't be dogmatic about it because that was a while back, but I believe we turned them down in both instances, specifically because of the issue with trying to market the property and what they were asking for. And I think David's right. I think it was one from somewhere in the range of about 30 feet to upwards of 80, 85 feet. It was quite an intrusion into the complex, and we thought it would be detrimental to try to market it with somebody having to purchase property and have 85 feet of it that they had to keep open for the clearance. And we, I think, and I can only speak for myself, but I think that we thought that that wasn't needed to go through and do the clearing to have that kind of variance for the, for the way that the entrance and exit and the accessibility and what have you to get back there and do the clearing. So, I don't know if that helps you guys with your decision, but I do believe that we voted twice as the city council in our term to deny that application.
Thank you for your comment, Councilman.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak, 6th C District, anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of the meeting and come back to the table. And Commissioners, I understand you have a few other questions. Miss Commissioners, the table's open.
Okay, to the chair, I guess my, my question is, number one, is this rezoning contingent upon the purchase agreement, proposed purchase agreement on the property? Again, my question is, if the rezoning does not take place, is a proposed purchase agreement that was in the paper, would that be nullified?
I'm going to defer to the building department on that. David, would you answer the question for me, please?
Well, they really are two separate entities. They're separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we all said on that. Commissioners, any other questions?
Another question?
Yep.
That's to Mr. Wade Trim?
Yeah, I'll allow it. Thank you, Nick.
When you discussed the different rezonies, did you discuss possible PUD agreement or prospective PUD, PUD agreement?
We, our, our first engagement by Allen Park was to look at rezoning code generally and to determine the best approach for the property in question today. Certainly, PUDs and stuff were brought up as, as a vehicle that, that could be used with that. In any, any respect, we encourage development agreements, whether it's a PUD or a mixed-use district or what have you, irregardless of what the zoning is, depending upon what the property is. Since you own the property, you're kind of in the driver's seat to negotiate a development agreement. That works best for you.
When you were discussing the, the lighting issue, did you discuss that it clear, Sky is concepted or is that completely separate?
Yeah, Nice Guy did come up eternally among the technicians, if you will, but given the character of Allen Park, that's not something that we thought was a reasonable thing to impose on developers.
That's correct.
Okay.
And if I may, Nick, while I had you standing there, thank you very much for returning to the microphone. You know, I'm pretty much satisfied in some of the non-conforming uses, if you will. I don't see any used car lots or, or used watercraft boats, motor vehicles, things like that, no exotic animals, no snakes and things like that coming to the property. Would you pretty much agree with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I thank you very much. Any other questions, Commissioners?
One other question that came up, sorry to bother you.
That's okay.
When you discussed the different zoning districts, and I was looking at the adopt orientative businesses such as tattoo parlors, X-rated businesses, is there any way that we can protect this property from being used for that purpose?
Zoning by nature of construction, if the use is not identified as permitted, then you cannot have it in the district. So, the only opportunity for a tattoo parlor, a sexually oriented business, something like that, you'll note that under the, the last line of the permitted uses is something that reads something like, and those other uses that the planning commission approves. So, somebody would have to come in front of you and say, hey, you know, I want to open a tattoo parlor, I'm just like a movie theater, or moviegoer, and let them take your best shot.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
And thank you once again.
You're welcome, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions before we, in discussion? The chair will entertain a motion for a...
I'll make the motion to approve it.
As printed?
I'll second.
As printed.
Okay. As printed.
I have a motion in a second, and I, may I add that... That's going to take care of the remapping and the re-zoning of the parcel? Okay. Also, the zoning text and map amendment will be included in the proposal?
Chair, one more question answered before we go for a vote.
I'll allow that, sure.
And that would be going back to, for some Wade Trim and Bobby one more time, and then to going back to the warehouse issue. Is there any way that we could potentially omit that as far as a, for the juice?
Well, well, certainly you, you have the right of community to choose what uses you want to allow in any district. I would discourage you from doing that. You might recall that at the very beginning of my presentation, we look at uses that are self-supporting and complementary, that tend to work on each other. So, it's very conceivable that you could have a warehousing complex that needs to be there to support a manufacturing facility, as an example. Or you might have a, a series of retailers that might want to have warehousing on site to, to accomplish that. So, I think, I think, to answer your question directly, yes, you could, if you wanted to eliminate that, but I wouldn't recommend that you do that.
And the chair, to the Commissioners, that anything that, any business that wants to come in, they have to have a site plan, and we have to take and okay that site plan. And we can take and adjust that site plan where we want to, as long as it's under the current, current laws, okay? There goes the building department, and, and it'll come to the board, board zone plan.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. You're welcome. Any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a support. I'm going to ask the Secretary to call the roll for voting.
Okay. Messenger?
Yes, innocent thirty.
Okay. Proda?
Yes, innocent thirty.
Dennis? Right. We'll come back to the Commissioner. Okay. Babbage? Yes. Graham?
Yes. The Commissioner, which to vote?
I will say no.
Do we have one name?
Okay. One, two, three, four, yes, and one, no.
The motion passes, and I want to thank those in attendance this evening. The motion is to make a recommendation to the emergency manager, Ms. Joyce Parker, on the proposal, and I want to thank those that spoke, and I also want to thank the Commissioners for the question. I want to especially thank the building department and Wade Trim for being in attendance tonight.
Chair, if point of reference, I think we also do need to vote on the rezoning of the eight parcels in question, not just upgrading the new, new district, but rezoning the eight parcels from the RD into the middle CC.
If that is the wish of the department, we can do that?
The current, if the current eight parcels in question.
Let's have a motion on the floor to rezone those eight some parcels that are in the RD district right now to the C-D, six C district. We have a motion?
A motion. Have a motion, Messenger, support?
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? Prepare to vote. Mr. Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Okay. Babbage, yes. Proda?
Yes.
Graham?
No.
Okay. Messenger?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, four, yes, or no?
The motion is supported and passed, and that concludes the business of this evening. We're going to go into old business. Any old business from the Commissioners? Any reports? Communications, seeing none, hearing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Any citizens' comments? Seeing none, hearing none, the motion to adjourn is on the table. All those in favor are signify by aye.
Aye.
And carry. Congratulations.